I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if you could please observe a moment of silence, please. Please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the Board Meeting Calendar Resolution were provided to all local media, town hall, township library, and all district schools. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Romeo.
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson. Mr. Conklin.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Greenough.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
Mr. Stillman.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Dr. Anamon.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our November meeting. Belated happy Thanksgiving to everybody. We're going to start off with our first item here. Last year during the 21-22 school year, we had a fifth grader, Raymond Obazinski, at Westbrook School, finished in third place for the New Jersey Elks Americanism Essay Winner. He is here this evening. Raymond, you want to come up? The title of the essay or the theme of the essay was "What My Country Means to Me." We have a microphone here if you want to share with the board and with the whole community some thoughts on your essay. And congratulations.
I just want to say that I'm grateful for everybody in this room for congratulating me on this essay. And I just really love my country. That's what inspired me to write this nice essay, getting me third place in the state of New Jersey.
Does he have the essay with him?
He does not.
Oh, okay. Maybe we could get a copy of it for our packet so that we could read it.
You can absolutely get a copy.
We're very proud of you.
Next up, we have our student rep, Ms. Meza, for her student representative report.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Is it red?
Yeah. It was messing up. So in October, we held our Spooktacular, which was a success. The Student Council helped raise money for the Island of Flags. We have our annual Holiday Door Contest coming up. We are looking forward to making some charitable donations to local food banks and the Giving Tree for children in need. On November 8th, we had Career Day, which was very nice to bring back. On December 8th, the high school will be having On-Site Decision Day. And the winter sports season has begun, and we wish all the teams good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next, if the board up here wants to move, we have a presentation to make behind us.
Good evening again, board, members of the community. This will be the file of, we hope to be the final of the Restructuring Committee announced last April. As you noticed, our involvement was defined for the better part of a quarter century. We know our state aid was diminishing. Alex, can you grab the microphone?
So we knew our state aid was diminishing. We knew our enrollment was dropping. So we created this Restructuring Committee. This is a brief timeline of where we are. We've posted all of our documents on our website under Restructuring Committee. So just a brief, we'll review this very briefly. We introduced a committee last April at a board meeting. The board commissioned a demographic and building utilization study from Dr. Haber. That was in May. We formed five subcommittees made up of board of education members, administrators, teachers and staff members, parents, community members, taxpayers, whoever wanted to be part of it, they joined a subcommittee. We turned nobody away. So whoever was interested was able to participate. We met throughout the summer in different subcommittees. In August, Dr. Haber came back to present his demographic and building utilization study to the board and to the community. At that meeting, he recommended that Westbrook Reata School to be restructured and repurposed. At that same board meeting, the board commissioned a redistricting study which focused on elementary attendance boundaries. So I presented an interim report a few months ago in September. We committed, continued our subcommittee meetings in September and October. And then we presented the final redistricting study from Dr. Haber at the October meeting. Tonight is going to be our final report in our board vote. If it passes, we will continue our planning for the next eight months. And then in September, this will take effect in September. So our Restructuring Committee, our school system has averaged about 210 students in kindergarten for the last six years, just a little under, actually. Those of you who grew up here, went to West Milford High School, many of you graduated with about 400 students. So it seems like we've been cut in about half. Okay? As these grades move through our system, we're not there yet, but as they move through our system, we're going to, our district's enrollment should stabilize at about 2,600 students. That's K to 12, down from about 5,000 at our peak, probably in the late 90s. So our approximate enrollment projections by level, remember, we moved a six grade out of the elementary schools a few years ago. You can see they're settling in around these numbers here. They shouldn't fear much higher or much lower than that, not right away, but in a few years. So the committee was formed to ask and answer one specific question. Can the district afford to operate eight schools plus our Highlander Academy? And sadly, the answer is no. In my opinion, we can no longer afford to do business the way we've been doing business. Right? So our S2, this is the new state aid funding formula. The formula changed about five years ago, and it's been a seven-year phased-in approach. Seven years of state aid cuts. This is actual, and these are projected. So as you can see here, we're losing about $10 million over the course of seven years in state aid. Right? At the same time, our enrollment has dipped. This isn't even the all-time high, but this is as far back as I could find it. So we went back here, this is about a quarter century of enrollment. This is actual, this is projected. And to even put it more into perspective, I know this is an elementary idea, but if you look at the high school, our enrollment was close to 1,600, if not over. And we're going to drop down to and settle in right around 700 students. And that factors in 100 or maybe more students who would attend Presaic Tech. So the high school will be cut in half and even more so. This is our enrollment numbers for this particular school year. And you can see the elementary grades are very short, very small. They average just 208 per grade over these six years. A little bit higher at the secondary level, but again, these students are graduating each year, and they'll be replaced by a class of about 210. So you can just see how we're losing just a little bit every year. So the recommendation is beginning of September to repurpose Westbrook School into the Highlander Academy, where we can turn this into essentially two Highlander Academies, a high school version and a middle school version. We'd need county approval to have both groups within the same building, but we think we can get that. To rezone our current Westbrook students into one of our other five elementary schools. And then some other schools, some other students at other elementary schools will have their placements change as well. We do have on our website, as well as on the countertop here, a list of all the addresses that are being redistricted or rezoned at the elementary level. So if your address is not on that list, it means your elementary school has not changed or will not change. So opportunities here, it's a lot of tough information to digest, but Mr. Novak, if you could speak, some opportunities that this does present.
So the first few in terms of opportunity, the opportunity we have if the recommendation goes through is our ability to work with students who are going to be attending different schools in the fall, just to make sure that that transition process is thoughtful. We've had some preliminary discussions with our parent groups, representatives from the WAPA, West Milford Parents Association, who meet with Dr. Anamon, myself, and the board to talk about this process. We've also had some preliminary discussions with our, with our staff and our administrative groups, really focusing on, you know, two or three big areas. One is the opportunity for our students to be present in the school that they may be attending in the fall, to actually visit, to see those hallways, to, you know, to see what those schools and the culture of those schools are about, meet the teachers that they will be with next year, meet their administrators, their parent groups. The other one is more of opportunity to meet the other kids that they'll be, that they'll be visiting. If you're not actively involved in sport teams or out-of-school clubs, you're, you know, your homeschool may be, you know, those kids that you have the most experience with. We've got a lot of ideas in the works in terms of, you know, in the old days, we used to call it pen pals, you know, group letter writing across school barriers. We also have, with the onset of the technology that we have now with Google Meet and Zoom, we can get those kids into those classrooms without physically having to leave the buildings. When we met as a strategic planning group about a year ago, one of the, one of the goals of the educational group, the education-focused group, was about the idea of mentoring. So with some of the things we've learned with the program we have called Heroes and Cool Kids, where our high school students come to our, our fifth grades and work on a mentoring program, which has been tremendously successful, we also have an opportunity for those fifth graders who are being exposed to those leadership activities to do the same for incoming primary students who would be visiting and going into a new school. So nothing, you know, an adult can tell, you know, students how to feel and how to, and how to acclimate to a new building, but nothing gets it done like the students who actually attend those, attend those classrooms and are part of those, you know, those cultural events and that sort of thing. We are having continued discussions as a superintendent's roundtable group. We have a meeting scheduled for the middle of December that brings our representatives from our parent groups with our administrators to talk about this, this very topic of, of transition, to, you know, to really focus on that social emotional wellbeing of all of our kids. Some of the opportunities, as Dr. Anamon mentioned, with the potential restructuring, that we would be able to have our child study team offices more centrally located, closer to some of the programs that could be housed here at the Westbrook Building. Ask any teacher about being a single section on a grade level, and, you know, the feedback won't be great. Collaboration, planning, having a colleague to just talk about the day with, those are things that our single sections don't have. In the restructuring plan, it's very unlikely that we would have any single sections for, you know, for the foreseeable future. Having two or three teachers on a grade level in a building is good for teachers, it's good for kids. Our elementary enrollment is only going to be between 200 and 300 students, students per building. Right now, we're under, we're under 200 in each building, which is, as Dr. Anamon pointed out, is probably about half of our capacity that we've had in the past. You know, 250 student elementary school in the buildings that we have is a very, very Our, some of the data points that we've been using, you've heard me talk about Lincoln, some of our assessment tools, I won't go too, too far into that today, I've talked about them a lot. We have the ability to get to know every student on a personal level. We know how they've been performing in terms of their reading level, we know about their math, you know, their math performance and their aptitude. We know and are able to track all of their data points, you know, in terms of their, their success and their, you know, areas in which they may struggle. In this, in this process of transition, you know, that source of data becomes a great tool for not only acclimating the students to the school and, you know, having their teachers ready to receive them, but it also gives the school as a whole, the principals, the teaching staff there, the ability to meet them where they are and not have to, you know, so to speak, get to know them for a month while they're learning who they are. They come in with this data, this data is a cross-district, so it's not something where their academic needs won't be met on day one, arriving in a new school. We have students who transition now and then, not in this, not at this level, but we do have good success with the students moving from one level to the other. One of the, one of the other, I guess, benefits of a restructuring plan, it doesn't officially close a school, like we have at the Hillcrest Building in our town, is that this will be a, remain a functioning facility so that if indeed a surge in, a surge in enrollment occurs, it's, you know, likely that this building would be able to be reopened in that, in that capacity. Although the recommendation from our consultant says otherwise, you know, we have to, we have to be future-ready. We know a few towns, you know, in our area that have opened and closed schools due to changing dynamics in enrollment over, you know, over the last 10 to 15 years. And one other is not on this slide. A restructuring of buildings would allow us in the short term to get a better efficiency out of our ESSR funds. For those of you, I know many of you know what ESSR funds are, they're basically the COVID relief grant that we've received. We have one more year after this school year to benefit from those ESSR funds with our increased, our increased access to basic skills instruction and teachers. Right now, we have 1.5 teachers in three of our buildings, and we have one full-time teacher in three other buildings. That money remains if we restructure into five buildings. So we will be able to increase our basic skills interaction in five schools from what we are currently able to do in the six schools that we have. So that's just, again, an added benefit for some, for the repurposing.
Some other, some other opportunities that we're anticipating at this point, we'll see from this year to next year, we'll see an increase in service for elementary phys ed, art, music, as well as media specialists. So we're a little thin now across the board in all three areas. We'll have a little bit more time added to our schedules for the week, so we think that'll help. Current enrollment here, our projected enrollment here, so you can see all of our schools are well within their building capacity. No school is dramatically higher than another. No school is, you know, bursting at the seams. All of our schools, we believe, can absorb the added enrollment, shifting from six schools to five. Our projected general education enrollment, this is an estimate for next year. This is the grade, the school, the number of students and the sections. But as you can see, there are fewer sections needed across the district compared to this year. The kindergarten, of course, is an estimate, but we believe it'll be fairly close to those numbers. These new numbers here take into account different neighborhoods that are changing from one school to the other. Mount Laurel is slated to go from Marshall Hill back to UGL, and so on and so forth. So there are some economies of scale, for example, at Apshua. You can see Apshua here picked up about 50 students but did not gain any teaching sections. We just fill in those classrooms a little bit more. And we're using our human resources more efficiently, which is important because of decline in state aid. Our personnel, our staffing outcomes, we believe we're going to have a reduction of four to six general education teachers, while at the same time keeping our class size at 20 or below in most instances. And this is just an average. There could be some classes that are a little bit above average, of course, there'll be some that are below average. But we're looking at not particularly large classes at the elementary level. So larger than this year, but this year is very small. 18.4 as an average class size is very, very, very inefficient for a public school district. Our approximate fiscal outcomes, the board asked for an approximate savings to this endeavor. We're looking at just over $1 million in savings, which may not be the entirety of our cuts this year. We may have additional cuts yet to discuss, but there's probably no other single thing we can do to save this big chunk of money other than to repurpose Westbrook School. Before aftercare, we know that there's going to be some, we are adding some aftercare facilities for next year for Apshua to accommodate some families that are currently being moved from Maple Road to Apshua. Currently, they have access to these daycare, so we're going to extend that to Apshua's school. So anybody who is at Apshua next year will have access to all these new daycare facilities, and there'll be no change to the other four schools. Building usage at Highlander Academy at Westbrook School, Dr. McQuaid, can you touch on a little bit?
Sure. So at Highlander, as we talked about, as Dr. Anamon and Mr. Novak mentioned, we do plan to use Westbrook School and repurpose it for the use of Highlander Academy for both a middle school program and a high school program. We, in preliminary conversations with the county, the county supervisor, special services does not see any issue with us gaining approval for both of those programs, given the fact that they've already approved our programs in the past in a different school location. Because Westbrook is currently a school and we're not planning to close a school, it should make the transition quite easy. We plan to also have students from our Highlander Academy here being offered electives at the high school where they can walk back and forth. And we still plan to offer our middle school students the opportunity for electives or other classes at Macabin as well. The ideal location is Westbrook for that because it's, it's close in proximity to that location. We also plan to use this building for home instruction services. So that's something right now that our, our teachers travel to all different homes, or we offer occasionally virtual instruction, but we'd be able to offer that onsite here so our students on home, home instruction could receive services at Westbrook School. In the future, we want to expand transition services in school-to-work and post-secondary plans with our transition programs here at Westbrook School as well. As you know, this school is a very large building, so we plan to use it and use the space as fully as possible. We do plan to move the child study team from the elementary building at Maple Road to Westbrook so that we can use that additional space in Maple Road. And this would be kind of the hub for our child study team, and then they would go out to the buildings. Right now, currently, our elementary child study team case managers do travel from Maple Road being the hub out to their buildings. It would just be instead here at Westbrook School. And we have talked about in our Restructuring Committees, using this space for professional development activities. If we were going to host our CPR training, for instance, our restraint training, that could all be done here and housed with district staff in this, in this facility. So moving forward, some of the other changes for special services, which is on the next slide. I don't know who's... Okay. So some of the programs will be moved in order to accommodate the enrollment shifts. We wanted to limit the number of programs that are displaced. That was one of the major feedback items that we got from the committee was to try to limit the disruption to the special education students district-wide. So we gave priority to try to keep programs together, and we needed to consider therapy spaces in all of the buildings as well. We also wanted to plan for long-term planning so that we didn't make a change of a program for just next year, but to make sure that the school building could sustain the program into the future. So that's where we came up with the next plan, which is on the next slide. The CLINE program, which is the Communications and Language Instruction Motivating Behavior CLINE program, or Autism ABA program, is currently housed at Marshall Hill School. In order to accommodate some of the enrollment and the classrooms that are going to be needed there for the general education students, the CLINE program will need to move. But the good news is that we can move CLINE to PK and be able to keep it together and still have a therapy space. So two classrooms would go to Paradise Knoll with a therapy room, and that would be for grades one to five. And then any preschool CLINE student that's currently in our CLINE would stay at Maple Road, and that building would now house our kindergarten CLINE. So students that are in CLINE would either be Maple Road School in preschool up to grade K, and then one to five at PK. Those parents may have some questions about this, concerns, I'm sure that that's going to come up, so I just want to kind of mention to the public that I do plan to email those parents tomorrow morning, and Mr. O'Donnell and I plan to have an open forum time for them to ask questions and be able to further talk about this topic this week. The preschool inclusion and preschool disabled class would move to Marshall Hill School because Marshall Hill can house one of our special education classrooms, but it just cannot house three classrooms there. And that, if, going back for some of our family and community members who are familiar when our inclusion and preschool program was up at UGL School, this instead would be at, at Marshall Hill, and it would feed mostly the Hewitt families and the families that are on that side of town would be able to go into that inclusion and preschool disabled program. Pending our IEPs, any additional special education position could potentially be cut. But one thing I always say to parents is that your, your IEPs have to be implemented, so just be assured if your child does have special needs that they will be, they will still receive the services that they are required by law to receive. I think that's it for special education.
Thank you, Dr. McQuaid. So the proposed changes will lead to an increase enrollment at the remaining eight of five schools. But like I mentioned before, all schools will remain within their building capacity, actually well within their building capacity. And how we went about, how Dr. Haber went about drawing up the new attendance lines is he, they geocoded every student on a township map. The emphasis was made to keep neighborhoods together rather than splitting a specific neighborhood down the middle. In a few cases, it wasn't practical. We wanted to coordinate all the changes with our transportation department so the busing is feasible. They wanted to maintain space for general education, special education, specials like art, music, et cetera. And they want class sizes to not just be small, but be relatively equal. They don't want 24, 25, 26 in one building, and 14, 15, 16 in another. That would not be equitable to our students, to our parents, or to our teachers. So our next step, continued planning from now and through the end of the summer, really. A lot of these things will be doing internal, so a lot of these internal control items, shared 911, the position control numbers, that's all stuff we would do internally. I know the board's expressed an interest in creating a school choice policy, which is something we could do over the coming weeks and months. Other ancillary concerns, you have moving furniture, classroom ordering for the new year, that stuff will have to work on, most likely after the new year. But the biggest piece will be the staffing transfers, review of our seniority list, who has bump in rights over who, and things of that nature. That'll be a collaborative process with administration, with the teacher union leadership, et cetera. So we feel we can get that started. The sooner we can get that started, the better it is for us to have this, have this plan ready to go for September 1. And all of our updates will be at board meetings, and we'll continue to post our information on our website. Just a special thanks to everybody who participated in this process. I know it was not easy. It certainly wasn't enjoyable. It's not something we all want to do. There was a, a line in one of Dr. Haber's reports, he said, "There's no joy in closing a school, but we simply don't have the state aid to fund aid schools, nor do we have the enrollment to support aid schools." So we hope to continue to work with the board, the administration, the staff, the parents, the students, the whole township over the next eight months to resolve this whole matter. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Raise your hand and we'll go around. Kate?
I appreciate the slide with the transportation to, yeah, the different daycares in town. I can't find this. I can't find this slide because I know that that was a concern. Is after-school and morning SAC also available at every school?
SAC won't change.
Okay.
If we have the numbers at a school, we'll offer SAC. It just comes down to a minimum number that we need to open a section of SAC. I don't anticipate a change for that. It might be easier, actually, if there's more students in each building, it might be easier to have it across the board.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you again to the board for their, all their time invested in this matter. So I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Anamon.
Thank you again, Dr. Anamon. That ends your report. Mr. Novak?
I'm going to keep briefs and I have a couple announcements of some past and upcoming events. One, I just want to comment on parent-teacher conferences that occurred in the days leading up to Thanksgiving. We had tremendous turnout in all of our buildings. At the elementary school, we had our in-person conferences up and running, and, you know, principals provided feedback about the tremendous turnout, probably one of those, you know, great moments of realizing that, you know, getting back to normal as best we can. The middle school and the high school remain with a virtual first option with the feedback that, one, some families that we've heard from appreciated the ability to be able to log in and meet with as many teachers as they could without standing and waiting on lines. The data from our Google Meet shows that we had an increased turnout year over year for virtual conferences in the middle school and the high school. So as long as we, you know, continue to see that data that shows that we are having success with more conferences being attended in the virtual format than were being attended in person, you know, we'll continue to review that. But, you know, the goal is involvement and participation, which is why we stayed in that virtual format, middle school and high school. It had nothing to do with, you know, any of the, some people perceived that it was still a carryover from a COVID structure, which it wasn't. It was really about a benefit that we found with the Google Meet structure and getting better involvement for families. So that's why we were able to stay that way. Also, I want to just highlight an event that we are having tomorrow night. I don't know if I'm stealing what you would put in your report later. In collaboration with Highlands Family Success Center and the West Milford Municipal Alliance, we are offering Hidden in Plain Sight, which is a tremendous program that builds a replica of a teenage room in the Macapin cafeteria. There's a presentation for about an hour and a half from the Hidden in Plain Sight organization that walks parents through how to identify drug use, drug paraphernalia, signs of potential abuse, signs of hiding, those types of things in a replica bedroom. We have the best turnout so far that we've had for this event. We have close to 100 pre-registered guests already planning to attend. And the reason I'm bringing it up tonight, I just wanted to remind everyone that preregistration only gets you pizza. Pizza. You can show up, no one will be turned away. We tried to over-order the best we could so that if you show up and you weren't pre-registered, we can sneak you a slice at some point after the pre-registered guests get in there. But we do have a, we do have a great night planned. We are fortunate for all the support that we've had from organizations. I want to point out that our counseling department, our West Milford counselors from Macapin and representation from Macapin and High School will be there. Our student assistance counselor, Janice Garrish, will be there. You know, she'll have an informational table set up for the programs and resources that we offer in our schools, as well as the things that we have available in our community. Our National Honor Society, led by Nicole Petra Silva, will be offering school-aged childcare. So there'll be a reminder message going out for that tomorrow. So we wanted to remove any obstacle for a family coming to visit. So school-aged childcare will occur, planning activities and, you know, arts and crafts and that kind of thing for the students who, you know, come with their parents to attend the event. We're also providing food so family doesn't have to worry about feeding, feeding the family for the night. So it should be a great event. Right now, you know, preliminarily, it's the best turnout that we've had, so, you know, it's a good success. And thank you, Debbie, for all the work that you did with the Alliance. On the agenda tonight, we are approving the weeks for our summer programs. That's usually the first step in the many steps that go into planning those summer activities. So we're approving the weeks that we're going to use. Down the road, we will approve staff and funding and those types of things. So what I want to point out, the STEM camp, the STEM camp has been tremendously successful over the last few years. Earlier in the presentation, I mentioned ESTR funds, COVID relief funds that we have. This is the last year that we have funding for the STEM camp and able to be able to offer it free to our community. So that's something we've been able to do. We doubled from one year to the other, we doubled the amount of students that we were able to give access to this, to this camp. I don't believe we turned anyone away last summer, and we'll follow the same process that we followed last year for this year, giving, you know, ample warning for when the signup sheet will come out so that our families can sign up and take advantage of this great program. And one last final announcement is the structure that we had in place prior to the pandemic shift was that we provided a library bus from our middle school and high school that would take students who signed the program, or parents complete the permission slip, students age 12 and up are able to be bused in the township library, and that would serve as a end-of-route bus stop. So the student, if they're going to meet with a tutor, they're going to meet with a peer group to study, if they want to just go and, you know, get out a book and get picked up for their, picked up by their parents later at the library, they can do so using the library bus. The permission slip went out in the school messenger, excuse me, went out in the school messenger about... The school messenger went out with the permission slip. I will send it out again. We had pretty good turnout for the first round, but there was no deadline. Parents can sign it, fill it out at any time if they want their students to participate. The reason we focus on students age 12 and up is that is the age in which the West Milford Township Library allows students to attend independently.
Thank you, Deanne. Mrs. Francisco, special report.
Yes, before you, the minutes from the October 18th workshop and executive session for consideration.
I need a motion to accept the minutes. I move to accept the minutes and from the workshop, executive session, and regular session.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Residents report, um, I have nothing tonight. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to the members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized first by the chair. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comments limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address the topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided to them to give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by the members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. Board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments and lay of the legal rights and those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Mrs. Francisco, there were a number of people that signed up, I believe?
Yes, the first person on the list is Kelly Warner.
Good evening, Kelly Warner, W E R N E R, and I reside at 3 Weeding Drive. Good evening, members of the board. I would first like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight. It is my hope during this time that my thoughts, concerns, and information will resonate with you all. I know how hard some decisions may be in regards to our school community. Please know that I respect and fully appreciate the work you do to make our public school district as successful, safe, and efficient as possible. I speak to you today as a former educator of 14 years in both the secondary and elementary levels, a future parent of West Milford Public School students, a mom, a wife, a relative, a friend, a neighbor, a part-time real estate agent. Most importantly tonight, I speak to you as a representative of Hyview Estates. I would like to acknowledge some of the members of Hyview Estates that have come here tonight. These are just a few of the families who have sent emails to each of you expressing their concerns and the negative impact redistricting our development, Hyview Estates, will cause in their own personal lives and families. I hope all of you have taken the time to read our personal emails and concerns, but to summarize some of the few that are written to you in these emails. Distance. Moving to a school that is now six miles away from our home, with two schools less than a mile from our home, adding significant amount of driving to and from school, not even considering the after-school activities. Busing. We hope that you have considered the time our children in our development would have to be picked up in the morning in order to get to school on time, or the distance our children will be on a bus unsupervised. Our children being potentially the first ones picked up and the last ones to be dropped off. We hope you have taken into consideration the amount of time our children as young as five will be on a bus for, with all allocated bus stops along the way. Efficiency. We want you to move towards a more cost-effective way, but has it been considered the new transportation needs for buses, including the gas it's going to take? The already established relationships students of Hyview have built with our classmates at Maple, now to be the only students asked to leave Maple Road and start anew at Apshua, leaving everyone and everything they know behind. Neighbors bought homes in this development for the opportunity to attend Maple Road. Siblings being separated. While one child may need special services only provided at Maple Road currently, the older sibling would be attending a completely different school. The long-term impact of reselling our homes in this development, potentially losing resale value, as a high settling point is the proximity of house to the school their child or children will attend. We are all aware that the chance to change your mind tonight cannot be based on emotion alone, and just like yours, decisions such as these need to be made off of data. These metrics are what push data-driven decisions, such as the ones you are choosing to make in the redistricting and closing of a school. Because of this, I would also like to lead with data of our own. These exact numbers prove that it is possible to leave Hyview alone and allow us to continue to attend Maple Road or even closer Westbrook, should you choose to keep that one open instead. Please let this be clear that our argument tonight is for you to please keep Hyview Estates at Maple Road and not redistrict our development to Apshua Elementary. Please also note that this data has been received from reliable sources. Before I begin, would anyone on the board like to tell the community how many students currently attend Maple Road that live in Hyview Estates?
We don't go back and forth.
Okay, that's fine. For those of you that do not know, currently there are 37 children that attend Maple Road from Hyview Estates K to five. Kindergarten, five. First grade, five. Second grade, four. Third grade, seven. Fourth grade, four. And fifth grade, 12. With the fifth grade moving out of Maple Road next year to attend middle school, the new projected number for Hyview in K to five for the 2023-24 school year will now be 32. Kindergarten will have seven. First grade, five. Second grade, five. Third grade, four. Fourth grade, seven. And fifth grade, four. When referencing the data you supplied in our recent board meetings, we were able to see the new Maple Road proposed attendance zone with the number of students that will be in each grade and each class. Upon doing the calculations with the numbers we have obtained of the enrollment of Hyview for the next year, along with the proposed attendance you have provided, please note that in kindergarten, we'll go from 37 to 44, making it from 19 to now 22 students per two classrooms provided. Second grade, I'm sorry, first grade will go from 42 to 47, 21 moving to 23, 24 students per the two classrooms.
Hang on one second. Are they going to make a motion?
You can take some of my time. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Second grade will go from 41 to 46, 21 to now 23 students per two classrooms. Third grade, 43 to 47, 22 to now 23 students per the two classrooms. Fourth grade, 38 to 45, 19 now moves to 22, 23 students per classroom. And fifth grade goes from 51 to 55, 17 now to 18 or 19 per the three classrooms already provided. It is clear through data that Hyview is able to remain at Maple Road with proposed attendance and a lot of classrooms used to provide this instruction. I ask all of you tonight to reconsider the redistricting of Hyview Estates. As a representative of the families behind me and others that were not able to attend, we ask that you leave Hyview Estates alone and allow us to continue being a part of Maple Road Elementary School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else has signed up? Oh, Dr. Gouge is next.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Murse Gouge, last name spelled G-O-U-G-H, and I'm a West Milford resident at 34 Center Street. I am here again to address the board in regards to the repurposing of Westbrook Elementary. First off, I would like to formally apologize to the board. I first heard gossip about the potential closing of an elementary school in June at my daughter's preschool graduation. I remember asking a neighbor who had children only a few years older than mine, seeing if this gossip was true. I was told Westbrook was not going to be the school to close. I didn't question it further. I was not aware of these subcommittees, restructuring committees at the time, just like many other residents, that were not a part of the school messenger, because I wasn't a part of it until the end of August, because my daughter entered kindergarten. I watched the August meeting virtually while my family was away. I had to play catch-up by that point because so much had already happened. That's why I came in so strong, because I knew time was of the essence. I apologize for taking that out on all of you. I realize the purpose of this agenda is to show how we are restructuring the district in hopes of receiving the state stabilization aid, which I hope you tell us tonight if we received or not. Hence, helping to close the deficit and accommodate for a decrease in state funding. Barbara Francisco said herself that the state will have to send in a monitor if we are unable to correct this deficit. As a result, there's no question as to why an elementary school unfortunately needs to close as a part of this plan. However, I still strongly believe that you are choosing the wrong building to close for several pragmatic reasons. Thankfully, the stabilization aid will get us out of this hole, but we are creating a whole new one by misusing the most, the largest and most centrally located elementary school in our district. Westbrook's original intended use was to educate the large majority of our centrally located students in this town, not to provide space for admin or professional development programs. That space already exists in our town and is not being utilized properly, not to mention that does not generate state aid, that student enrollment does. The Highlander Academy will offer some income by paying rent. That is pennies compared to what it's going to cost to keep this building open. I will reiterate that it will require a lot of funds to keep this building up to code, maintain the grounds, and staff the building, and my understanding is that staffing the building is our tax dollars. I have seen in prior meetings that we have a capital budget for bigger projects such as structural renovations. Even the newest school like Westbrook will eventually need repairs, just like its large retaining wall outside. It was upsetting to me as a resident to see in the West Milford messenger that this was stated to be a cost-savings action. This was a false advertisement, that the school building is not actually closing. Residents have said to me, quote, "I don't care what they do, as long as our taxes go down." How misinformed they are, that this building would instead be used for administrative space, programs, and the Highlander Academy. I do... I do commend Dr. McQuaid for creating this program that accommodates these children's needs. This program has come from the Queen of Peace since 2013 and has been trying to find a new home for quite some time, to my understanding. Why not give these students the opportunity to be with their peers at various points throughout the school day by housing the program at the high school? I'm surprised to see the high school enrollment and capacity numbers were conveniently left out of Dr. Haber's report, just to justify that the high school can't accommodate this very vital program. I have asked this question before, what, and I have not been given a concrete answer, and that's what I'm looking for tonight. I would also like to say on record that this drop in enrollment from Dr. Haber for Westbrook from 2016 to 2020 is false and inaccurate, as it does not account for the fact that 6th grade was moved up to Macapin after 2016. If this is a done deal, there needs to be an option for school choice for the 4th graders, which I know Dr. Anamon has brought up. I want to hear more details about that, please. You also need to consider expanding the SAC program and not just allowing transportation to daycares, because as they have said from people that are currently going to Maple Road and now have to go to Apshua, that is a very long drive for a toddler, a preschooler, a kindergartner to have to go all the way to Apshua. I went there for just my daughter's Girl Scouts, and it was about a 10-minute drive just within the development of Apshua. But my biggest question is, outside of the stabilization aid, how is closing the largest and most centrally located elementary school going to offer us long-term financial stability for this town? Myself and many residents would like you to disclose what the cost is going to be to repurpose this building. Like I said before, if we received this aid, we should be thankful that it gets us out of the hole, but I speak for many, many people, family, parents, residents, that it's time to think long-term and put down the shovel before you dig a new hole, please.
Thank you. Is there anybody else signed up?
Yes, Stephanie DiPiano.
Hey, good members. My name is Justin Warner, another W E R N E R. Assistant Kelly, who spoke earlier.
Your address, please.
37 Allen Road, West Milford, Jersey, which is in Highview.
It's hard to hear you, that they want you to go closer to the mic. Is your red dot, is the red dot on?
The red dot's on.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
So yes, after following both these two speakers, thank you for having me. A lot of other questions you brought up mentioned earlier about the SAC programs, and that was just stuff that we were concerned about as parents. One thing I would like to show and be clear was, I had a show earlier, was with Highview Estates, they'll be able to be attending Maple Road, and it wouldn't affect the numbers. But that happened. Main thing is to have, in this world is to have, needs to be, is the paramount issue of our children, the safety, their best interests at heart. Now, with these long drives, if for some reason the school does close, which is likely to be in that, due to the numbers, it's financially irresponsible. That being said, you're saving money with other things, but what about for bus aids? Watching over the kids, especially kids aged by 2, 11 years of age, the long drives? Is it going to be a one-stop shop in Highview if they have to go to Apshua, or there won't be any other stops going to Macapin? That was just some of my concerns. The other concern is being that the construction of Route 23, that bridge, all the excess of coming up and down over the next year, the transportation up and down Macapin, that's going to be affecting all High Chris, all the stops going all the way up to Maple Road, into town, will all be getting flushed up Macapin. If they decide to take the back road instead of waiting in traffic on Route 23, that's all stuff that needs to be considered, especially sending these young kids, these children, up and down for that long timeframe. Once again, these young women have phenomenal points, and I'm not going to keep repeating myself with what they just said, but thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Can we have some heat? Is there anyone else signed up? Anyone wishing to speak? Come forward, please.
Good evening. My name is James Ingeito, spelled I-N-G-E-N-I-T-O, and I reside at 36 Cahill Cross Road in West Milford. Thank you for allowing me the time and your presence today. It really, you know, just like everyone that has spoken, thank you so much for all the facts and the good points that they brought. You know, I don't want to reiterate and beat a dead horse here, but let's be honest. Opening up Westbrook to different programs, yes, that's a great idea, but once again, I have two young children. My wife and I are both full-time workers. I also work a part-time job as well. Now, with this school being centrally located right now, that's great. Now, with my oldest daughter being restructured to a different school, not only is that, you know, a geographical thing, meaning mileage-wise, time-wise, everything like that, but that also brings stress upon, you know, my family. You know, I also am, my wife and I also take care of my mother-in-law, who is disabled full-time. Now, trying to figure out, you know, care for my children, taking care of all that, my wife and I being full-time plus workers, it's not logical to close this school because of the viewpoints that were brought up today, and also for personal reasons, of course, like I'm saying here. Now, Westbrook, I believe, should not be the school to close. It is the second one on the list that has the highest enrollment. Does not make logical sense to restructure just Westbrook alone, but of course the other schools. Let's take one of the other schools that maybe are a little underperforming, needs more renovation, something like that, and do it, you know, maybe use that school, you know, for the administrative offices. I understand that there's also going, you know, this deficit that's here, it's always going to be here. Every town has it, you know, all the different towns I've lived in and whatnot, we all have a deficit, even in our personal lives, let's be honest. It's not the ideal way to close an elementary school. That's just my viewpoints here. I'm sure a lot of other people here, you know, will feel my pain and along with, you know, everything that I have brought up today. So I'm going to say, like I said, I'm not here to beat a dead horse, but let's reconsider things. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else wishing to speak? Come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Courtney Weiss-Cromack. I live at 7 Bordeaux Terrace, last name W E I S S hyphen C H R O M E C K. I'm here with some questions regarding the special ed restructure and movement. I don't expect any of them to get answered today. These are just thoughts and questions that I have based on what you guys presented. In terms of moving, the first bullet, moving the children from Marshall Hill to PK. Marshall Hill's not handicapped accessible. PK has lifts to make it handicapped accessible, which is great for children in wheelchairs. If they're not in wheelchairs, that doesn't necessarily help them. There's still stairs that they need to use then. And you guarantee that the lifts are always going to be working, because that's another concern. Moving the pre-K inclusion and pre-K disabled classes to Marshall Hill. If you keep some classes at Maple Road, how are you deciding who stays and who goes? The other question is, all the Maple Road classrooms were just brought up to date in order to meet the Q-SAC requirements, is all of Marshall Hill already up to that code and that standard? Has the purpose of Highlander Academy been explained, and the reason why it must be separated from the high school and it can't be housed within the same building? Because I think it's important that people of the community understand that. In terms of pending annual IEP reviews, if you're assuming that a special education position can be cut, you're assuming that you are going to have fewer children classified, which brings to question, are you currently overclassifying students or do you plan on underclassifying students? Have you also started to consider what this plan is going to be when the state changes the model from the achievement discrepancy model to the pattern of strengths and weaknesses model over the next four years, and will result in possibly more students being found with a specific learning disability, since you're now no longer looking for just two numbers and subtracting like districts do?
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Gottlieb?
Wayne Gottlieb, 20 South Richfield Road in Uwet. I was very impressed with the presentation from the Highview parents. I think you really got it together, but I'd like to follow up. We didn't have to do that. These people obviously don't know my reputation. Let's follow up a little bit with what they said in light of what Dr. Anamon said in his presentation about equity with class sizes and the desire in the restructuring to create classes across a district that might be 18 to 20 people, maybe a little bit more. I think the data presented by the Highview parents actually indicates that the number of classes at the all-consolidated Maple Road with their neighborhood in it would in fact be somewhat larger than similar classes elsewhere in the district. So I think they have a fair and equitable discussion about their proposal, but we really need is to have some other Maple Road parents in this room talking about their reaction to have classes that are slightly or noticeably larger than elsewhere in the district. I'm from Upper Green Lake. I don't have kids in the district. I'm not going to do that, but there are people, I'm sure, in town who would have opinions on that point. The only other thing I want to say is, one of the other speakers talked about people in town thinking that by saving a million bucks, their taxes are going to go down. Reality is, your taxes aren't going to go up as fast. Nobody's taxes are going down around here, especially when you're talking about saving only a million bucks on a 70-plus million-dollar budget. You've got cuts, a millionaire coming from the state, your healthcare costs are probably going to go up significantly, your contracts always go up every year, so saving money on taxes is lowering them is really kind of a pipe dream. But any step forward you can make with saving a few bucks is a step in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, Amy Klipka, 1565 Macapin Road. So I was just looking at what people are talking about, and then are there figures that you guys could share on the cost to repurpose this building? Does anyone have figures on that?
There isn't really any restructuring that needs to be done.
Mike?
It's basically going to stay the same, just a matter of reconfiguring some of the classrooms, and we actually have people on staff that do things like that.
Okay, wonderful. That's all I had. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Goshkutugno, 65 Reeland Road.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Gottugno. Goshkutugno.
Gosh, okay.
65 Reeland Road, and that's spelled C-U-T-U-G-A-N-A. I just want to point out that the two speakers from Highview Estates and Mrs. did an exceptional job, and I agree with all their points. I just want to make some additional points, and that's primarily on the budget and reduction that is proposed. Given the current state deficit and the planning that's been occurring over the last seven years, first off, it's shocking that this has just come up in basically a one-year period and that we're caught off guard, given that this process should have started years ago. That said, however, the proposed reduction of 1.1 million is just a drop in the bucket, and it's not going to make any significant impact on the deficit they were encountering. So I would encourage the board to look at much greater reductions and actually close the school that they're saying they're closing but are not actually closing. Whether to close an entire school or close, I would prefer personally to close. Don't say it. I'm not going to say it then, but not this school, because this school is the largest and newest school in the district. I know that school, my son goes to that school, and one of the issues that I also partake with the schools, my daughter goes to Westbrook, my son goes Maple, and looking at the schools' class sizes in Maple proportional to Westbrook, they are about half the size. Now, with the entire school district being redistributed, the class sizes will become, for the most part, average. However, if you were to look at Westbrook School as the one to stay open and move Maple to Westbrook, you could accommodate that entire school, and rather than relocate the special ed program, Highview Academy, Highlander Academy, to Westbrook, why cannot that not be absorbed into the middle school and the high school for the programs that these students are claiming that they're going to be at this school so that they can be walkable to the high school or middle school? To say that those students cannot be in the high school or middle school is unfathomable, given that that's their peers. Those are just the points that I'd like to make. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Monica Church, 40 East Haven Road. Just want to clarify some things. I think there's been a little bit of misconceptions. So closing a school has not been anything new this past year. I attended a meet and greet Board of Ed candidate meeting in 2016, and that was a major topic. Candidates saying, "I will never close a school." Candidates say, "I can't say I won't close a school." That's been coming up. Even my husband, who grew up here, said, "They've been talking about this for years. Moving 6th grade to Macapin, it'll never happen." They tried it 30 years ago. A lot of changes happened, and we've actually managed to do it, and through COVID, so it's not impossible. I've also seen this district do things before coming to this decision. If you look at those solar panels, that was through a grant to try to make the school buildings more efficient, to save money in the long term. Moving 6th grade to Macapin was also a way to try to save some money. It kept the curriculum more streamlined. I've been part of the school system now since I have a freshman and a 7th grader, so many years, and I've seen steps that have been taken, and unfortunately, we've gotten to this moment, and it sucks. It does suck. But in five, six years, all your kids are going to be at Macapin and the high school, and they're going to love it. And unfortunately, the bus ride, my kids are on the bus for an hour every day, half hour in the morning, half hour in the afternoon. It does suck. It sucks. I have no other way to explain it. So they are older, so I understand when they're younger, it's hard, but ask any UGL PK parent, it's just a fact of life living in this town. So I know it seems scary, the change, but I promise it'll, we'll get through it, and it'll be okay, assuming that the vote comes to this. But I just want to make sure that the, there's a misconception that this all occurred this year, that all of a sudden, the administration, the board was like, "Let's repurpose Westbrook." And I never, ever heard the excuse that it was going to lower our taxes. I don't think anybody thinks that's going to happen, living in West Milford. So I just want to clarify some things. I have seen stuff done over the years to try to avoid this moment. It just, we just haven't been able to pull it off. So there's still more work to be done. So this isn't, like somebody said, it's not the end of the bill. So whatever happens, I think the district will get through it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, just one second. You can come up. I need a motion to extend.
Can I make a motion to extend the time for the public discussion beyond 30 minutes?
Do we need a panel? Okay. All those in favor?
Five.
Okay. Name and who phone?
Caitlin Babcock, B-A-B-C-O-C-K. I live at 13 Post Place. I come today, I am the CPAC chair, but I'm not up here as the CPAC chair, just as a special education mom. I just wanted to reiterate to the public and to everybody here that as a special ed mom, every year when I walk into the IEP meeting that I go to, I have a thought that, oh my God, they're going to change my son's program, and he's going to have to move schools. And my son has gone to UGL, he's gone to Maple Road, he's been on the bus forever. I think- I think it's nice that a lot of the kids who do need to move are moving with some of their friends in the neighborhood. I know a lot of families whose special ed child has had to move because they changed programs, so they had to move schools, but they weren't able to bring any of their friends with them. So I just wanted to kind of let everybody kind of think about that a little bit, that as we have this large population of special ed families, special ed parents, something that we go through on a yearly basis. So I just wanted to bring that to light. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you ready?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Connors. Last name C-O-N-N-O-R-S. I live on 37 Highview Drive. I just want to speak today as a child who grew up in this town. I spent a portion of my elementary career in the section of Upper Greenwood Lake that was bused to Marshall Hill. I then moved to the far end of the lake and typically had some of the longest bus drives of anybody in the town. Now when I compare that time I spent on the bus, which really wasn't a big deal, to what it's like being in a large classroom full of students that's difficult to learn in, I would much rather take that long bus drive and not have 24 students in a classroom if I can have only 18 to 20. So I think when prioritizing things, equity and making it the best for everybody should take priority over a couple busing issues forth of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Did you?
My name is Stephanie Berenger. And it's your name, my last name spelling, or E-R-E-N-G-U-E-R. I live at 274 Lake Shore Drive, Hewitt. My issue is a little different than everybody else's here, but I can completely relate. So I came here tonight because I was trying to find out the result of a HIB report, which in an email was told that it would be spoken about here, which I haven't heard anything yet, which is fine.
We want to stop you before that happens because you probably shouldn't be speaking publicly. Our HIBs, we'll be discussing the HIBs at executive session and we'll be coming back at the end of the meeting to do a vote.
Okay, well, I'm going to speak on behalf of these parents because my kids have to ride on a bus every day. They get on a bus at 6:30 just to get all the way to the middle school, which is ridiculous to me. So I can only imagine what they're going to go through. And my kids get bullied on the bus constantly. And they get bullied in school constantly. So I'm going to speak for them. I hope that school doesn't get shut down if their kids have to go through what mine are going through. So I will stop because I don't know the whole thing. This is my first time here. This is my first time doing this as a mom. But I'm really upset with how things turn out. So I hope for them that it works out.
You will be contacted, right?
No. Well, that's not what was said in the email, though.
Okay.
It said it would be explained here tonight. That's why I came here.
The HIB involving, the HIBs will be explained to the board later tonight in executive session. The board will vote on it after executive session and will contact the families tomorrow.
Okay. The email said that it would be discussed tonight, so I figured.
Unfortunately, maybe that was unclear. It will be discussed by us. You don't have.
Privately.
We do it in executive session.
Okay, well, I don't know how it works.
No, I just, we want to make sure that you get everything.
Yeah, well, I haven't been so far. I've been misled very much. So I wanted to come here as a parent who cares about their kids.
Oh, absolutely. So Dr. Anna Moan definitely will be reaching out to you.
Okay, I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Sean Frazier, F-R-A-S-E-Y-A-R, 15 Missat Drive. I just want to point out, it's not just a busing issue. Born and raised in West Milford. I went to Westbrook growing up. My kids, I have two kids that go to Maple Road. We really enjoy it there. They've been a part of the school now. They have their clique of friends and they're doing exceptional academically. My son, who's in kindergarten, has anxiety. It's something we've had a discussion with him, just being honest. It's a possibility. You can already see the wheels starting to turn. It's not a matter of just being on the bus for a long time. When I came back and bought a house in Highview, there's never even a thought that we would get stuck going to a different school. And whether, we all understand, school probably has to close. It is what it is. But our main point is, we know you guys made all your presentations. You gave all the numbers. And I've spoken to parents on these subcommittees and they said they basically felt like their voices weren't even heard. Yeah, they had these meetings and everything, it was great, but they weren't told which school was closing. They really didn't feel like they had much of an input. And it was just a way of saying, hey, we had these meetings. It's not just our kids being on the bus for a long time. It's, there's two elementary schools within a mile of our neighborhood. Just leave us alone. Maple Road, Westbrook, whatever, we are right here. There's no reason for it. If we do have kids that have to go to the Children's Castle or whatever, where are we going to bus them from Apshua all the way to the Children's Castle? It's insane. It doesn't make any sense. I'm in law enforcement, been in law enforcement for 13 years. I work an hour away. I don't have to stay in this town. It's very easy for me to take my three kids out of this school district and move closer to work. I'd rather stay here. This is my roots. But you guys force our hands, you wonder why people are leaving this town. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, Linda Stanton, 45 Alvin Road, West Milford, New Jersey. I'm here as a Maple Road mother. My children are now 37, 35, 32, 27. Put four kids through Maple Road. I put a grandson through Maple Road, Tommy Keough. And my son just bought a house across the street from me in Highview, knowing his children a year and a half ago were going to Maple Road where he went to school. It just, I am very emotional about it. I just don't get it. You're, it went up and down. Like, where does that come from? It doesn't make sense why you're picking Highview. And I guess we just really want to know why Highview. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I need a motion.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure. I'm not supposed to. And everybody's going to be mad at me tomorrow. So either way, it won't matter. Go ahead.
Marissa Goff, 34 Center Street, last name is spelled G-U-U-G-H. I have just one more follow-up question, just something I want to clarify. Just because unfortunately, I don't know if 100% trust Dr. Haber's presentation's demographic numbers. In the last month's, sorry. In last month's presentation, he was saying about empty rooms in all the other following elementary schools. And I've had many, many residents, teachers, reach out to me privately saying, "Those aren't empty classrooms. They're empty rooms, whether they're art rooms, music rooms, and something that's used for some other type of need. They're not actual classrooms." So I'm trying to look at the presentation that was presented tonight, and it was helpful for me, I am going to admit that. I just want to know, because you have stated, and this makes me very nervous as a parent and I'm trying not to bring my emotions into this, I'm trying to think of this as concrete as possible, is what is the wiggle room that you're going to leave in these schools? Especially something like Marshall Hill that looks like it is having a bigger jump than, say, Paradise Knowles or Upper Greenwood Lake, because they are so far separated from the other schools? What is the wiggle room? What capacity will they be at? I know you keep saying they're not going to be near capacity. I would like to know, as a resident, as a parent, what the capacity is, because I don't have the blueprints for these schools. I don't know how many classrooms they have or how many teachers you're moving over to there. So I would like to know that because, like you said, Dr. Anna Moan, if we need to open Westbrook up again, if there is a big jump in numbers for some reason, if enrollment does go up, because like I've said before, we don't have a crystal ball. We have no idea if the population is going to increase. Like I said in last meeting, it actually has gone up 4%, contrary to what you've heard from Dr. Haber. People are working from home now. It is more feasible to have more children, maybe not, you know, four, five, six. But I know many parents here that have three, four, five children in this town. So you might see a slight increase in enrollment. And I guess my big concern is I just want to make sure that there's a cushion for this to not happen in four, five years, where you have to reopen this building. And then you have to displace the Highlander Academy that, from what it sounds like, could be a very, a very good program with middle school and high school here, if you make it work. But if you have to displace them in four to five years, then what are you going to do? I think that's my big fear, is I'm just trying to think, like I know you all have, you've been working on this since April, of just what the long-term plan is, what the percentages of those classrooms, what they're going to be at next year if you put this into motion for 2023? And then how many, so if it does go up slightly, say enrollment goes up 4%, 5%, can that be accommodated for this shift, displacing all these parents that have to bus now, these long distances, and then have them come back four or five years from now? These poor children. And I know, oh, children are resilient, but that's not fair. So just as a parent, I would just like that to be maybe clarified a little bit more tonight, not just empty space. How many classrooms are available in the other schools? I'm seeing here, I'm trying to understand these graphs, this data. You know, I have just worked a full day. I'm a little tired, just like all of you are. So I would just like that explained a little bit further, you know, what our wiggle room is at the schools. I hope I explained it myself.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? If not, I need a motion to.
We'd like to close public comments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just before we adopt the agenda, I want to make one amendment. I'm going to pull on page 13, Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number 42. I'm going to pull that for further discussion. I have to do a little work on that. I will pull 42, Resolution Number 42.
It's under Personnel. So I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll go to Education first, Mrs. Dwyer.
I'd like to move items one through nine for approval and item number 10 will be voted on after executive session.
Second. Any discussion under Education?
You know, I had a question about number four, but I think I got an answer. That's the name of the grant, play Unified. Okay, because I was confused about something. So I got the right answer.
Yeah, that's the name. And unfortunately, I just forgot to put it on last month to accept the middle school grant money. That's why we're putting it on this month.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions under Education? If not, Barbara Roca?
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Greenow.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Personnel, Student Affairs, Mr. Guarino?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to move items one through 41, 43, and item number 44. I want you to carry on.
Second. Discussion. Anyone?
I just have to, I would like to say congratulations to Kathleen Cosgrove, who is going to be greatly missed in our school. She was a wonderful art teacher. She is at the high school. She touched many lives. The wonderful art that is in the hallways is, and shows her teaching skills because that comes from our honor society kids. And it's a great loss for West Milford. I know that she's ready to move on to her warmer temperatures. So I just want to let her know that she will be greatly missed. And I'm trying to think. That's all I had on that. Anybody else have anything? Kate?
First, I really wanted to recognize, and it's not every board meeting that I see a school bus driver in perfect attendance. And so I wanted to not only thank, but congratulate Tracy Connolly Jones. You know, it's been a difficult couple of years with transportation and not just in our district, throughout our whole state. And so I really appreciate that and it's nice to have that on our agenda. So thank you to all our bus drivers, but to especially Tracy. Also, wanted to say, you know, thank you to Megan Kelly, a former student of mine, and great, you know, just working with her and good luck, you know, sad to see her name on here and sad to see Kathy Cosgrove also. What an incredible human to work with and to just see her work with students. And we're really going to miss her.
She truly is a great loss.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else under Personnel? If not, Roca?
Mr. Greenow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Operations and Finance. Mr. Stillman? Second. Discussion?
I have, I have, I have something to say. I, this is such a hard, hard decision for me for many reasons. And I've taken the emotion out of it. And I just want to state my concerns. First of all, we don't have the costs on restructuring and that's a concern. And I hear that the community has a concern with that. The second thing is that Governor Murphy has an initiative of mandating preschool. And if that happens in the next couple of years, I wonder where Westbrook is going to be in that. And it seems to me that we have a lot of money for raises, for large stipends, for different things that could be used to maybe mitigate that $1 million. And as somebody said, $1 million in a $70 million budget is almost like a drop in the bucket. The other thing is, I'm concerned about the real estate incentive. People move into West Milford because of neighborhood schools and now we seem to be losing that. Finally, believing of our Director of Special Services, who is so instrumental in developing such a beautiful plan, I just have concerns about who may oversee this. And finally, the emotional part of this is the time the kids in Highview and in the Westbrook area are going to spend on buses and the distance that they're going to go, the stops that they have to make. What happens when the roads are not that clear? What happens when Route 23 is rerouted onto Macapin Road? So those are my concerns and I just want to let people know that I'm not voting for this. So thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else have anything on this motion? Do you want to read the statement that you? Oh, go ahead, Ray.
I know it's brought up a couple of times about the Highlander Academy specifically, not housing that in high school, Macapin. I think you've spoken about that before. But I think maybe it's good just to remind or let people know that maybe didn't know that beforehand.
Why it's the way it is?
Yeah, why is it not in the high school or Macapin? Because I even had that question when we were spending $100,000.
And they're.
Sure. So I'll put the microphone a little closer since I'm just getting over. So I'll put the microphone a little closer since I'm just getting over some illness. But so the Highlander Academy is approved as a separate public school, which is technically a therapeutic program that offers group and individual counseling. It compares to what you would call in the private school sector, a private school therapy program, or similar to where some districts send their students out to private school. The students in that program have varying disabilities from depression, school phobia, anxiety, other mental health and other mental illness concerns that the majority of them do not feel comfortable in the public school setting for their entire school day. That's not unique to West Milford. Most schools are finding with mental illness going up that their districts are in need of such type programs. They either create programs, or then they send their students out of districts. What we found in West Milford, being far away and talking about long bus rides, is that for our students to go to a student, to a program out of district successfully, sometimes they may be on a bus ride for an hour and a half to get to a program that we could create here and then have a cost savings as well. Because the cost of an out-of-district school for some of those students that go out could range anywhere from $100,000 to $100,000, could go up to $165,000, depending on the type-
Last one replaced.
Right. It was, I think, $165,000. So the cost can be pretty significant. So instead, we hired our own school counselors, our own staff, and then we do it in-house. Students do go to the high school for some electives, but when I say there are some students going, you may see 25% of the students that are benefiting from that, but the other 75% stay at the academy the full, the full day. What we're finding right now, if we want to be transparent and open as a community, is that our middle school program is currently in the building of Mackupin. And if I'm being quite honest, it's, it's not very successful. And I think the parents of that program would, would also agree with that. They know that the students in that building, they don't have enough space. So if you need a space to just cool off, or just kind of be, be alone, or have an area that's more zen, if you will, more relaxing, you just can't do that in a, in a public school setting. So it's successful because of the design of the program and it being a separate place, and then allowing students, once they're ready to transition into the larger setting, to move into that, that larger, you know, that larger group. I don't know if there's anything else.
And the benefit of that is, with the middle school for us, is that the likelihood of moving those students back into the high school, or high school, might be a better option.
Yes.
Might be a better chance.
Thank you, Ms. Van Dyke. Yes, the goal, the goal is that right now Highlander Academy will receive students, and then we find that those students, hopefully by junior or senior year, are out into their, into the public school if they can. There might be some students that stay back, but by opening a middle school program, we hope to even catch students earlier and then be able to re-inviate and get them back to the high school earlier than that.
And I guess because it's its own school, basically, you've also been able to bring students from other districts, right?
Yes, we have been a receivable tuition-based program as well, where we've received students from, I think in total, three, three different sending districts have sent to us. Right now, we don't have any current receivable students right now, but that's rolling depending on the year. We usually find that those students come to us in like the second half of the year. Once they're, to be honest, not successful in other programs, then they come to our program.
And so this is a program that's already saving money by not sending our students out of district to other programs. And that's not something we see in the cost savings of tonight's reports. Because as one of the parents said, this is something that's been going on for years, that we've been looking at things and making changes, even before my time on the board. That is a change that was saving a lot of money, but can also hopefully bring in revenue, which-
And the move of the program to this building makes it a little more palatable for other districts to be able to want to send students here because of where we are.
I can see that, yeah.
And the function of the high school being here, there's a number, we, we know that transportation, so they're limited, the students that are here are limited to any kind of extra activities, you know, any, you know, what would you say? Like they do the audio, you know, the program with Joe Jordan and-
Right, visual audio.
There's, and then the whole school has to take it. But if they're able to go for one class over to the high school, maybe five or, you know, six of those students are going to be able to incorporate, and that will get them back into the Gen N population. I, I think one of the things I did want to say, because I'm looking at this now, and as far as the stabilization aid, Barb, that's not why we applied for stabilization aid, correct? And what was, that's, that's not the reason we're closing the, the school.
No. The stabilization aid was just a, a funding opportunity because the state of New Jersey had some additional funds. But it, it was in the last year's budget for 2223, you had that opportunity for, well, in the 2122 school year, you had that opportunity because they had extra money from COVID. But that's going to go away. That, that's just an opportunity that they put out there just to placate the districts that lost significant amounts of money. Some districts have lost a lot more money than we have because of their moments. So we still have not heard about our application for 202223, and that might not come again. Also, we've had success in the last couple of school years with our extraordinary aid applications. The state of New Jersey, again, has funded the, that, that application, that annual application at a, at a pretty high percentage, like between 88 and 93. Extraordinary aid is for those costs for special education students that exceed $40,000. And prior to COVID, we were down to about 38% funding of our excess costs. And the last two years, we've gotten over 85% of our excess costs. So we've been very fortunate in the last couple of years, and it's actually helped Dr. McQuade with some of the decisions that she's had to make for students that have had to go out of district because of different situations that have come up. But that's not a guarantee. It's going to happen all the time.
And we're, we're not counting on that.
Yeah, we can't, we can't ever count on that. When we, when we use the extraordinary aid to offset our special education costs every year in our budget, we have to do an application in May to justify that money that we offset. And if that offset is not achieved, then we're running in, in a deficit with our revenues. So it's a delicate balance. We try the best we can. We don't have a crystal ball. And our budgeting is done about 18 months prior to the end of the school year. So we do the best we can, given all of the variables that do come up. But that's what-
I, I think, and I think there's some confusion about that. So I want to make sure that the public understands that. I also-
We had hoped to have our stabilization grant reviewed already, but the state has not done so yet. So it's later than anticipated.
But we're not planning on, on that money for, I mean, you would love it.
It'll be a one-year up our budget, but nothing more than that.
The whole thing was-
Likely to be a large sum. As reports were that it was $30 million budgeted?
$30 million budgeted for $183,000, no, $183 million worth of requests. And the intent of the grant last year, when it was first implemented in 2122, was that you needed to have a plan in place, or, you know, you had to have a plan because the money wasn't going to be there, and you were going to have to absorb these state aid cuts. So there has to be a plan.
And the state aid cuts, another confusion, it didn't just hit us last year. We have been going through this for, are we in, what are we in, year six of? Is this six, seven?
Year five of seven.
Five of seven.
Still two more years to go.
So we have, and-
It's in the presentation. There's a project, there's an actual and a projected in a different color. So we don't know what that number is going to be. Sorry to cut you off.
No, no, because you know the number.
So the, the state aid numbers won't come in for probably three more months, give or take, so.
Well, if he does what he did last year, it won't be until the middle of March, when we're supposed to have the last week in February.
Right, so.
You know, there-
Lot of moving parts, but.
As far as, I, I, I'm trying to clear up some of the questions that are out there. The, the, how many, how many classrooms? Every building can probably, that, that would be left, probably could house double the enrollment that's in there right now, that would be in there. So with, there is, there is room for everyone. When he counted those rooms, I do understand the confusion because he didn't count like an art room or a music room, or, and, and that makes sense because there aren't, there aren't kids in there all day long. So, you know, at one set class. So I think that that might be where the confusion lies. I think we're trying our best. Why we didn't close, look at the outer schools. That was another question that I got the other night. And I, it's because of the size of our community. If we had closed an outer school, we talk about long bus rides. If you have a kid that lives, if we have a student that lives, say, out on Canister Road, okay? If we closed one of the outer schools, say PK, we would have to bring them, the closest school would be Apshua. And again, that's a long distance. And for Apshua too, they can't come in off of Route 23. They have to come in like off of Echo Lake, and then it's going down. So that bus ride. I, I think the, one of the other things I think maybe you could address, Barb, is the transportation, how they looked at how long the kids would be on the bus. Because there are kids, I can speak of my own kids in the past. I live in Upper Greenwood Lake, and my kids rode the bus for at least 20 minutes just to get to Upper Greenwood Lake. And I live on the lake, so I think maybe you could address that.
Yes. Our, our transportation supervisor and the dispatchers looked at the most feasible way of transporting our students. The Westbrook program, when it was originally put into place, actually broke up a lot of the neighborhoods. And so we tried to make it as fluid as possible so that there's no turnarounds, so that there would be a straight run. Basically, Highview would be picked up and then go directly to Apshua School. There would be no other stops along the way. So we tried to make things a lot more fluid in order to preserve neighborhoods and preserve the students not having to switch. We have a situation now where, you know, we have parents on Mackupin Road that are going down to Apshua School, and Maple Road is just around the corner. So it's an unfortunate position for us to be in, but I can say that we've, we've tried to think of every possible scenario and trying to do the best that we can with the hand that we've been dealt.
Right.
So, Barbara, you said on the, with the bus, because I was listening to Kelly's data, so she said, right, she's estimating roughly 32 students in Highview next year. So you're saying 32 students from Highview would get on a bus and go to Apshua? They wouldn't pick up anyone else along the way? So we'd have a 54-passenger bus with 32 students on it?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we have a 54-passenger with 30?
Again, listening to-
There would be other stu-
Is that-
Okay, the way you would normally pick up is you would go to your furthest point, and you would pick up your student and then come back. So then Highview would be on the way back down to Apshua School. They're not going to be, be picked up on the way. And this is how it was explained to me by transportation. They're not going to get picked up on the way out of the, the transportation yard. When they come out of Highlander Drive, they'll go and pick up the balance of the students, and then as they get closer to Apshua School, they'll pick up the students and go directly down to Apshua.
Great, so, so again, so it's, so again, they come out of Highlander Drive, they go to Highview.
No, they're not going to Highview. There'll be other students that'll be on the bus, so.
So the transportation, I mean, I don't know. I've, I've lived in town since I was four. Transportation, like, I'm not very fast, but I can walk briskly to transportation from Highview in like five minutes. So wouldn't they leave transportation and go to Highview?
That was not what I was told.
Well, are they coming back from their high school run?
They'll be taking, right, they have to come back from their high school runs.
Okay, so again, their high school run, they're right there by the transportation.
Right, so I, I don't think the bus routes will be finished until we have the fifth graders exited and the kindergartners are-
But if they're picking up other students on Mackupin Road, right? They're going to go down Mackupin Road, they're going to pick up the students, they're going to find their common turnaround, they're going to come back because Highview is on the other side of the road anyway, on, on the way down to Mackupin School. And my guess is that when they come back at the end of the day, Highview will be the first ones to be dropped off because they're coming up the hill. They'll make the left into Highview, so they'll make the drop off, and then they'll go.
Well, and that would make sense, meaning that on Mackupin Road, if you're driving from here to Apshua School, the houses are really only on one side of the route. And we're not, for God's sakes, going to cross our elementary kids across Mackupin Road. So those children would not get picked up. It would only make sense, knowing a little bit about bus routes and how they go, it would only make sense for the Highview students to be picked up first in the morning, but then to be dropped off first in the afternoon. But I don't know how the bus runs are going to go. But being how Mackupin Road is, we're not going to have our elementary school students cross Mackupin Road. So that would make the most sense. So sometimes when you live the farthest, yes, you might be picked up first, but you might be dropped off first because of the way that the roads are. So there's a lot of things taken into account, and no one here today can say exactly how a bus route is going to go.
Because they don't know how they're going to bid it out.
That's right.
There'll be, there'll be people on Ridge Road near Cahill Cross that are going to be going to Maple Road School. Could very well be that people on Ridge Road are going to be picked up, then it'll come down Cahill, then make a left on Mackupin, and then they'll end up picking up Highview on the way down to Apshua Road. I don't know the way the routes are going to go. That's our supervisor and dispatcher's responsibility. But I can tell you that they're going to, they don't want our students on the bus for that long a period of time, especially our elementary students.
I feel like they focused on keeping, like, when you look at it, the amount of time on the bus is, in, you know, and, and that's, that may not be a consolation if you don't want your kid on the bus for that amount of time. But if a child's on the bus for between 10 and 20 minutes, that's about the average for everybody in the district. So the, it is equitable for everyone, you know? So anyone else got any other questions, or?
I also want to read Mrs. Stevenson's statement.
Yes, yes, I have a guess.
Before the vote. Mrs. Stevenson, unfortunately, was not able to come tonight, and she asked that a statement be, be read that she prepared. "It is with great regret that I am unable to attend tonight's board meeting. As a board trustee, I've had the dates of board meetings in my calendar for over a year. I would never miss a board meeting, especially one as important as this, unless it was out of my power to be there. Even though my vote won't count tonight, I want to state publicly that I would vote no on this motion. I am not in agreement with the recommendation of the administration to close Westbrook School. I am quite aware of the financial troubles of the district, but this plan is not the correct plan. It is not being implemented properly, and quite simply, it won't be enough. I am also not in agreement with how the redistricting plan is being unfolded. Moving Highview from Maple Road to Apshua is wrong. It is unfortunate that this plan is going through in this manner. The district will not solve the financial problems with this plan. The administration is leaving us with bigger problems in the future. I am disappointed with our board and administration tonight."
Does anyone else wish to speak or anything? Did you have something else?
Yeah, so earlier, I know Terry spoke about this a little bit. We talked about a $1.1 million savings. Again, I think we all agree, it doesn't mean that it lowers taxes. We just need to figure out how to find $2 million. So I think to Terry's point, aside from this $1.1 million, we also have to do, and right, Barbara knows, she's got to do a lot of work to probably find another million dollars somewhere. So I agree with many of those things you said about stipends and bonuses and whatever else it might be that's on the docket, right? Some of that stuff might have to change as we move forward. The other thing, I, I just want to say that for us as a town, like, I really appreciate what all of you have done to come to us. And very rare in this world today do you see two sides talk, and it's going to be difficult for us. And I think you all appreciate that of us, no matter what happens. But I, but again, this is just a different town. I, I've been here since I was four years old, so. So, it's wonderful to see that we can all sit and have this conversation. And maybe we're going to walk out of here and have some more conversation one way or the other. But I appreciate that all of you have done that. There were 15 or so of you that spoke. And some of you probably spoke for 30 other people. So, I appreciate that because we might be here till 11 o'clock. But thank you for all that you're doing to fight for your children.
Debbie?
I originally wasn't going to say anything, but I feel that, that those who know me know that I can't stay quiet for too long. So, I want to piggyback off along Mr. Greeno. I do appreciate everybody that has come out tonight. I appreciate every email that was sent. I appreciate every phone call that was made. I appreciate that you've stopped me at ShopRite or wherever in West Milford. And I mean that most sincerely. It, I appreciate the folks that are sitting here alongside me as well. This has not been easy. This is probably the toughest thing I've ever had to do in my, I'm going on nine years on the board. I could go on about my children's experiences in West Milford, but I, they're grown and gone. And, but we also, as a board trustee, we have to look at the whole district. We have to look at the whole situation on the financial component. We have, it's not easy. There's things that are not right. It's hard. And I just want you guys and gals to know that, and I'm just going to speak for myself, that I'm voting the best way I believe would be beneficial to everybody. And I hope that we can agree to disagree. I hope that we can all work together to, for all our kids. Because your children are the most precious things that we have here in West Milford. More so than the beauty of this town, more so than the adults sitting in this room. Our children are the most important things. And I, that's why I'm sitting here at the table. Thank you. Anyone else?
So, you always hear as a board member, you know, don't let it be personal. It's very personal. So, this affects multiple people in my immediate family. Whether it's that their children, my siblings and my cousins and my, like, will now go to a new school, many of them. And it affects family members whose jobs will be different, if they have one, in this community where I volunteer. And I love this part of what I do, but I hate this part tonight. And so, no matter what we do, there is always a personal aspect of it because we live here too. And so, I could be on either side of this table tonight. I'm also voting for what's equitable for the majority of the people of West Milford. And that is when I get into a leadership position, the best way that I personally can look myself in the mirror every day and say I did the absolute best possible thing that I could do or with whatever I was faced with. And I know every single person could do nothing better than that. The other point I wanted to make is I did hear Mrs. Church say, back when I first ran for Board of Ed, one of the hardest questions was, will you close an elementary school? You know, and some of the other questions that were asked to me that were printed in the newspaper back then, that were on Facebook Live, and, you know, many of you were there. The other question was, how do you feel about neighborhood schools? Obviously, I support neighborhood schools. But we are West Milford and we are one district altogether. And I know that that is hard, harder when your children are in elementary school possibly in West Milford, because we have had some division. You know, working and being in other parts in the state where the district is one and they are all one, there is a different feeling sometimes. And I hope that for our community, that we can be one together and not the Mustangs versus Wildcats or something. You know, we're West Milford. And I really feel strongly about that, you know. The last thing I wanted to say was, oh, so I forget what year, maybe 2016 when I was first running, I don't know. That question, I remember thinking, my gosh, no, I would not want to close an elementary school. And I still stand behind the answer that I said because something, a word that has not been said yet tonight was Hillcrest. And when I look at Hillcrest and the disaster that that's been, because we closed Hillcrest, okay? And the struggle that every one of us up here and all of you that we have to put up with because that building's closed. So, the idea of closing a building does not appease to me. Because then you have to get it up to code and then you have to pay. We can't afford to ever reopen Hillcrest. It's not a possibility for us. So, I could never close a school. And when I said that first night, I still stand behind and I look back and say, wow, I'm glad I had that foresight to say I would never vote to close a school, but I would vote to repurpose one. And so, as much as this hurts in every aspect, I have thought this through since I first ran. And I agree with all the comments of my co-trustees. And I thank all of you for coming out tonight.
Anyone else wishing to say anything? Claire?
So, I'm going to reiterate what the previous board trustees have said. I appreciate everyone that's come out, everyone that's sent an email, everyone that's reached out on the sports field, at a party. This has been a tough year for me. I'm the new member on the board. But what I, but what I will say is that I was attending board meetings prior to this for many years. And I knew that this was something that was going to be discussed, talked about. I mean, at all the board meetings, it's always been discussed in the past about budget and balance in the budget and the loss in state aid and the decrease in enrollment. We have to save money. And how are we going to do that? You know, this is the plan that's been put forth. But we have to do what's best for the whole district. And as hard as what that is and as emotional as what I am, I have to take the emotion out of it. And that's been hard with all the emails. You know, I've lost sleep. It's been a tough couple of months. But I was elected here to do the best for this whole district and for the taxpayers also who are in the community. And we have to save $2 million and probably more in the future. And, okay, it's only $1.1 million, but it's a start. And if we don't start somewhere, then I don't want to even think what could happen. Thank you.
Anyone else? I will just go along with the rest of the board. I do want to, I don't want any of the public to think that we didn't hear your emails. I don't sleep to begin with, so they didn't help any. But I will tell you, we have taken every, consider, everyone's email into consideration. I personally am going to be impacted by this. And I have to live with that and I understand that. But again, we have to do what's best for all, not for some. And I am very thankful that we're trying to address the issues of everybody. But in a town like this with, you know, 2,800 students, there's going to be some people who are going to be unhappy with us, I think. But we're doing what we took our oath for. And the financial end is the big part of being a board member. And this is one step. It's not, it might not be the end of the road. I'm pretty positive that there's going to be other things that we have to do. We have been put in this position and we can't, we can't ignore it. And we have to go and do the best we can for everyone. And that means the students and, believe me, every one of us. I don't think there's any one board member that has taken any of this lightly. And then we've looked into everything. We've talked to every person that's come up to us and, you know, I've taken phone calls. I don't respond to emails, none of us do because we're not supposed to because then you're speaking as a board. But I've spoken with people and I know some of you from growing up. And it does hurt me to be able to say that I might not be able to do what you would like. But I hope that you understand that we're trying to do what's in the best interest of everyone. And of course, unfortunately, with everything in life, it boils down to money. That's where we are, you know. We would all like to keep, I never would want to close a school. I said that, you know, I've been on the board on and off for almost 20 years. And I've always said, there's no way I could close a school. And I agree exactly with what Kate said. I don't want, I, the one thing we want to see is if we can repurpose the school and make it even better and help our stu, some of our students to make that move forward. And it will help our, we've seen the kids at the Highland or an academy. And I think this is, this is a program that definitely will help us. The cost that, to send those children out is astronomical if we had to send them all out. So, I just, I hope you, I hope people understand. I can understand you not being happy with us at this moment because I would feel the same way. But I think we have to do what's best for the good, for all of West Milford and not for a few. And did you have something, Jason?
I agree with everything that you said here tonight. You guys, I feel for you, I feel for the children. I agree with all the board members here and everything they said. And I'm not going to be on the board next year or, you know, have to handle the repercussion with this. With that being said, I'm going to abstain from the board.
Anyone else? If not, roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mr. Stillman? Mrs. Dwyer?
No.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
No.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes. Thank you all.
Next part of your agenda, your committee, Mr. Stillman?
Moves two through six.
Question.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Will we table number five until after exec? I'd like to make a motion to table number five until after executive session.
Second motion.
Okay, do we have some? Okay, I have another one.
Okay, so you're tabling number five.
I'd also like to make a motion to table number two until after executive session.
Oh, wait, okay. Well, she wants to table two.
Two or five?
Both. I was just doing this.
I'm sorry.
I'm asking to table number two and number five until after executive session. Sorry.
Okay.
I was doing two different things, but I could do it the same.
So, I need a second on your motion for the two.
Second.
Roll call? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now-
I'd like to move three, four, and six. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien? Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Move number seven?
Question.
Roll call?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Abstain.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Abstain.
Will you wait for the three?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain on number eight and yes for the rest. Negotiations.
Hey, I got to do something.
I'd like to move items one and two under negotiations. Any discussion? If not, roll call?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Commissaries. Parks and Rec, do you have something?
Nothing this time. We didn't have the meeting until about a couple of days ago. It's going to be after.
Okay. Safety, we have no safety meeting. We have no safety. Roundtable. Mrs. Lockwood?
No, that was me. So, I wasn't able to go and Mrs. O'Brien went in my place.
Okay.
All right, so there was a meeting on November 17th. First of all, I just want to express my deepest gratitude to all the wonderful PTA, PTO, PTS representatives that were there. Phenomenal group of people who are really dedicated towards our schools, our kids and our community. So, I want to thank them very much for their hard work. Items under the superintendent's roundtable meeting was a discussion about the second grade numbers at Westbrook School, which was explained by Dr. Anamon that there are three students pulled for resource and leaves 23 students in each of the classes. So, that's how they're addressing the enrollment component because they're saying it's too many kids in the classroom. There is, there was a big discussion on coordinating events during the school day across the schools, especially the elementary. Parents with children in multiple elementary schools often have to choose between being at one school over another. It seems that there needs to be a better communication with the principals, especially on the elementary level. The graduation parade for 2023 hasn't, none of that has been discussed yet and will be most likely discussed starting in the new year. The restructuring was brought up and that there'll be a joint meeting. I think Dr. Anamon mentioned it or Mr. Novak mentioned that there'll be a joint meeting with the representatives of the PTAs, PTOs as well as the principals within the next few months. And then school choice, which was also brought up that we will, as a board, will be discussing.
Thank you. Officer State County School Board, Karen.
Yeah. I attended the meeting in the beginning of November, which addressed the physical and health standards. And it was an excellent meeting because as there was an assistant superintendent from Wayne and someone, an assistant superintendent from Lynnhurst. And it was explained, the standards were presented. And anything that you see in parentheses does not have to be taught, which was refreshing for me as a conservative. Also, they talked about options, you know. Parents can opt out of some of these lessons. And thankfully, Mr. Novak has provided that opportunity for parents. So, that's good. But it was a very good meeting. We have to teach, we have to teach to the standards. But how we teach them is up to us. The state has nothing to do with it.
Hometown rule.
Yeah, so it was, it was very, very good. And that was it. And next year's convention, I found out, will be four days. So, we'll be able to, you know, attend more workshops. But this was excellent.
Can I piggyback on Mrs. Dwyer's? Just for general reference, the opt-out has been in existence since 1980. So, when, back in 1980, when they started incorporating certain, certain standards in- So when, back in 1980, when they started incorporating certain standards in health class, and there was a pushback, you had, the state of New Jersey said, okay, parents can opt in and out for religious reasons, personal reasons, stuff like that. So this is nothing that's just kind of transformed over the last year or two. This has been going on since 1980. It's just the standards and the curriculum has changed over the course of the years, obviously, especially now what's going on, what's coming out of trend.
The other thing that I should have mentioned is that if a teacher feels uncomfortable in teaching some of the curriculum in the district, they also have the option of opting out, which I didn't know.
I did not know that either.
So that's something that should have been mentioned.
Not at all.
So I think that's good.
Where, can you see that?
It was a State County School Boards Association meeting. You know online, Kate, the meeting is online.
I just never heard of a teacher opting out of their.
Well, I never did either, but.
Because they didn't know.
I never did either.
Well, look how many people did not know that.
Maybe they didn't know.
Yeah.
They do now. It's right. A surprise. As far as New Jersey School Boards, I really don't have anything.
Well, we did go to the workshop.
Like, did that report, didn't you? Oh, no, I didn't.
You're right. I guess we did go to workshop. Mrs. O'Brien, myself, and Mrs. Dwyer, also Dr. Anamon and Mr. Novak, and Mr. Schultz was there with us. It was a good workshop, however, they didn't open, like, the workshops were so crowded because the floor wasn't open the first day where they go and see all the vendors and that, which made it very difficult because then on the next day, everybody tried to get into the workshop. So I think that that's why they changed some of it, because it's usually four days and it was three. So it was a little difficult to get into the different workshops that you wanted to. I did get into quite a few that I did want to get into, but it wasn't, I'm glad that they're changing it because it didn't give you a chance. They didn't have like the action labs like they used to where you could meet other board members and sit and, you know, at a table and talk about different things. They didn't have any of that this year. So that was kind of missed. But other than that, I thought it was. It was good to be back and to be interacting with other board members, I guess.
Two of the workshops that were, that I felt were very effective were the ones on leadership, which discussed, you know, the presenter talked about what encompasses a good leader. And the other workshop was how to become an effective board member. And that was very good because it sort of showed you there's a line between being a board member and being someone who's just in it for.
Personal.
Their egos, you know? So that was good. So it was good. And next year, next year, as I said, it will be four days and I look forward to more of that. So that's all I have. There was the one about the Ezra money, too. That was helpful, going there, kind of a better understanding. There was Sustainable New Jersey, which is a grant, which I did go to, which was very interesting. It would be wonderful if some of our staff could get some more information on that. And Dr. Anamon, you went to workshop on school rankings?
Correct. We went, we went to one on school rankings and school ratings. So we brought up an ed committee the other day and we agreed that we're going to start a task force at the high school to look into this in greater detail, try to demystify some of the different ranking systems and rating scales that are used by some commonly locked into websites and places that rank high school. Usually it's a high school that does the ranking, that gets ranked, typically not elementary schools or middle schools. So we were thinking about starting a task force at the high school to break into that, break those data points down to see where we can improve upon. And if we improve upon those data points, rankings will naturally increase. More to follow.
Okay. Legislative, Mrs. O'Brien?
On November 21st, the New Jersey Senate held a voting session and approved the following measures. Information literacy standards would require the state Board of Education to adopt standards. I have people already running away. To adopt standards and information literacy to be included in the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Information literacy standards would describe the knowledge and skills that enable students to locate, evaluate, and use information effectively, including digital, media, and technological literacy. The standards would address such themes, the differences between fact, point of view, and opinion, research methods, research methods, and accessing peer-reviewed print and digital library resources. Forgive me, I am trying to get through this quickly. The bill now awaits action by the governor. Something that was brought up earlier, actually, is here tonight. Specific learning disability determinations would modify the state criteria for determining whether a student has a specific learning disability under IDEA. By permitting the use of a response to intervention models and other alternative research-based procedures, such as patterns of strengths and weaknesses or case studies, prohibiting a district from using any single procedure as a sole criterion for determining whether a student has a specific learning disability or for determining an appropriate educational program for the student, requiring a district to ensure that the evaluation is sufficiently comprehensive and at a minimum include an assessment of basic psychological processes to identify all of the student's special education and related services. New Jersey School Association testified on the importance of permitting school districts to use every evaluating, every evaluation tool allowed by IDEA to meet the needs of all New Jersey special education students. This bill was approved by the Senate and it has now moved to the Assembly for further consideration. Remote counseling sessions would require school districts, charter schools, projects that schools, that employ a school psychologist and offer in-person school psychology services to students in grades K through 12 to allow students to attend counseling sessions or meetings of any kind through virtual or remote means. Under this bill, a student would not be eligible to participate in remote psychology sessions if the school psychologist determines that an in-person counseling is in the best interest of the student. This has been approved by the Senate and the bill goes to the Assembly for consideration. And finally, the electric school bus fund would provide a supplemental fiscal year 2023 appropriation of $15 million to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to support year one of a three-year electric school bus program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Technology, Mr. Corrigan. Township Board of Education Committee. Corr, could you reach out to them about another date?
We have to set something up, so I'm not quite sure if you want to do it before the
Okay, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, they felt that we shouldn't have committee. We should.
Because Michelle did call me and asked if we could get another date together. So did you, were you thinking on December 2nd? Oh, you can't. Oh, I'm sorry. How about the 9th, maybe? Maybe the Friday, the 9th?
I can do another.
You can?
I can do that. Just remind me.
Morning?
Yes, like the 9 o'clock time? Maybe you could reach out for that, Cor. West Milford Municipal Alliance. Kate, are you going to do that one?
Yes. I know that they're working on the community needs assessment. And really, this week, the biggest thing is tomorrow night, it hit an implant site. And I cannot express enough to any parent that doesn't know what it is. It's really an education for parents. Every single day, substance abuse changes in our society. There's a new gadget, there's a new something, there's something that they can take that's getting them high or, you know? Basically, there's new things on the market all the time that surprise me and it's something that I work in that area, you know? So there are sweatshirts with, you know, hoodies with the, what do you call it? The strings that you could, you know, from the string. Or there's things that look like pens or flashlights or. It's fun to walk through this event tomorrow night and see a child bedroom set up, just like Mr. Novak said, and look around and think that you know exactly what you're looking at and you might not be knowing exactly what you're looking at. So if that piques your interest, I think every parent should go and have that education, even if you think that, and God, I hope all of you think that you will never have to deal with that or have that in your home, that would be great. But I think as parents, everyone should be educated and know at least what's out there right now. So I can't say enough great things about that program. Thank you to the Municipal Alliance for funding that and for bringing that to us. And I'm so excited that so many people signed up. That's epic. Other than that, I just, I know that there's grants like Heroes and Cool Kids is happening, our great program, and we talk about that a lot. And I know that the fearless leader of the WMA is working tirelessly on the funds for that and really trying to bring programs to our community. So thank you, Deb.
May I make a comment? Is that okay about the Alliance? All right. First of all, first, thank you for your kind words, Kate. I truly appreciate it. Doing that, doing the thing, la. I don't know if I really should be. Being the coordinator for the West Milford Municipal Alliance has been truly an eye-opening experience for me as well. And the only reason why I want to say this is because it happened at the last meeting. We were able to get a couple of kids from the Heroes and Cool Kids to be part of the Alliance. And these kids are the ones who are involved in sports and extracurricular activities and stuff like that. And the reason why I want students on the Alliance is because I'm not a student. I don't have children in high school or middle school. I want it, I want to see and hear firsthand from those who are walking the walk and talking the talk, what's going on in your world. Because I can, as a coordinator, I can come up with ideas and suggestions and recommendations and programs, but if it's not benefiting the kids, what a waste of time and what a waste of money. And the one thing that all three students have brought to my attention over the last couple of months is the Bud Bus and about the changes in the marijuana law and how it's been such a difficult thing that they're dealing with because if we, if we think that marijuana is just being sold to kids, you know, people who are 21 and over and the kids are get, and the kids aren't touching this stuff, we got our, we're going to, we got more problems than, you know, you guys aren't seeing the whole picture. And I, those, and those are, that's the thing that I, that's why Mr. Novak and I, like, just went bananas as soon as we were able to get that program going. We didn't anticipate the response. We were praying for just 30 people. I was going to be thrilled silly. Now we're over, you know, we're up to 100 people tomorrow. I had to buy more water. So I wanted, I want to take this opportunity as, as I'm rambling away here, and I know everybody wants to go home, but I want to take this opportunity to thank the community for your concern about your kids and about your, you know, about kids, period, because if you do go, your eyes, you will, you'll be mind blown. Thank you.
Deb, if I could comment on that, too, sorry. I appreciate everything you just said. I also, we did receive the Municipal Alliance, I mentioned it one other time, that letter. We've, the Municipal Alliance has funded a program for middle school students called We're Not Buying It. And you've probably heard about it here before if you come to board meetings. I know you've heard about it. Some of you have Macabre students who have been in the program. And from what I understand from students and parents and the program is that it's teaching our Macabre kids about the marketing of substances. And, you know, just like, but in a different way, back when we were kids, the Dare Program and the, you know, just say no stuff. And like now, it's all new things and it's marketed different ways. And so we have to educate our children on healthy living, you know, and making good choices. It was funded through the Municipal Alliance. The paid center, the program that worked, the educators that came to our building and worked with our educators here to teach that program to our students, sent the Municipal Alliance a letter with a concern. It was very professionally written and it said, they are concerned about our community because what they are hearing from our children is that there are multiple businesses in our area that have signs and that are promoting substances. And that's also a very important thing to note, that someone from outside our community is saying, hey, guys, you have something that not every other community I'm working in has, and this looks like it's, your students are saying it's a problem. So to me, that is a huge red flag, you know? Because it's not just us saying, hey, we don't like this, we live here, but it's someone else looking in and saying, not everybody has this. You guys need to start talking about it. So thank you.
I'm going to jump in one more minute. I'm going to, I know, you guys. All right, so just, just to let the public know, the West Milford Municipal Alliance is open to anybody, okay? You don't have to be invited. There's no secret handshake. It is usually the second Monday of the month, West Milford Public Library. I also do Zoom, okay? It's not like if you go in and you've got to be there every month, okay? You can reach out to me through the school district. I will send you information when our next meeting is. You could just pop in, you can hear about what's going on. If you have concerns along the areas of drug and alcohol abuse, I'm not a counselor, I'm just the coordinator, but I've been meeting people through multiple different programs, working with United for Prevention to State County, which does, helps out the various programs that we're offering here in West Milford. And I'm kind of the go-between person, but I'm just giving that out to the general public. It's open, it's free, and my philosophy is the more the merrier. Thank you.
Thank you.
CPAC, so there's been no meetings since the last board meeting. I just spoke with Dr. McQuade prior to this meeting. We're going to try and set up possibly a meeting before the end of the year. I know it's hard with schedules and everything, but I'm sure that the parents would probably love to hear from Dr. McQuade before she leaves. There is a meeting scheduled for January 11th. However, that's going to be left to the discretion of who is replacing Dr. McQuade. Hopefully, we get somebody, you know, approved by then. And so that is actually going to be up in the air. Probably would know more by the next meeting in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Old business. Anybody have any old business?
Seeing none, I'd like to close all business.
Now you need a motion to close the business?
I have an old business.
Oh, you do?
Oh, never mind, take it back.
Sorry, old business. If we had still had the policy in place tonight, that as Board of Education members, that we could attend virtually, Courtney could have been here and been a part of this meeting. Being that this meeting was moved, I think that that would have been a fair, a fair judgment. I know that the last time I brought up us being able to attend virtually, we said, no, we need to be in person, it's better when we're in person. Of course, everything's better when we're in person. But if there's a circumstance where we can't be in person, wouldn't it be nice to have that option?
We did it one time. We did it many times and the policy's right now not in place and I'm asking for it to come back.
The only time you ever, that I was not present, so I shouldn't speak, but I think they did it for Steve Drew when he was in the hospital.
That is correct.
Only time that they did that. Our policy does not reflect it. It's just like, unfortunately, the students can't attend virtually for snow days, so like.
Well, we were here in this room, and people that I am currently on the board with.
It was during COVID.
Were on the screen over there when they could not attend, right?
It was during COVID that I wasn't here, so I don't know anything about this. Who was it?
Well, I think there were a few of you.
I attended one meeting when I was away last year, but it was still during the COVID period. I didn't vote, I wasn't able to vote. You can't vote. Because they don't know, and you can't go, you can't be part of executive session either because you can't bring it into executive session. So, I mean, we can revisit the policy, but that's the way it's always been, because priority is to be here. I understand Courtney was sick, and when she messaged about her statement, that's why I made sure that she sent it to Barbara so it could be read.
I mean, yeah, no, Courtney tonight is one example. Sorry, Court, I didn't mean to use that as an example, but I, it's something I've discussed in the past. I think there were actually multiple people. I didn't realize that you can't vote. I thought Barbara was taking their vote over there. I didn't realize that. So then really, I guess what the purpose would be, you know?
Or I didn't.
I would have to go back on the notes.
I have.
I guess my question tonight is, can we revisit that in policy now?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else for Old Business? I need a motion to close Old Business?
Motion to close Old Business.
Second. New Business? Oh, wait, I didn't take the voice. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? New Business? Anybody? Need a motion?
Motion to close New Business.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Go on, Terry. Oh, wait, we're going to do it wrong. Okay. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the Board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to or directly related to the operation of the West Milford School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized first by the Chair. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full names, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by the members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged, and the Board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The Board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments and the like of their legal, of the legal rights of those affected and identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment?
Kathryn Weiss Connors, W E I S S dash C O N N O R S, 37, Highview Drive. At the last board meeting, I asked if you were looking into why we have so many administrators leaving. I hope that is being looked into and that we can nip that in the bud so we make sure we don't lose any more. My other one is, I have to tell you, this is for special education. Every time I see a resignation of a full-time, what I'm thinking is a full-time special education teacher assistant, I hold my breath that you are not replacing them with two part-time ones. And so far, I have seen, by looking at that they're getting benefits, that they are coming, that you are replacing them with full-time teacher assistants. And I have to thank you as a parent of a special education child, that you are keeping consistency in the classroom for our children. It is very important for a special education child to not have different teacher assistants coming in and out of the classroom all day. I know there are school districts that do that, and those poor children have trouble with the transition. So I want to thank you as a Board of Education for continuing to keep full-time teacher assistants at times like these in the classrooms, because you are helping our children. I know it's only a small handful, but you are helping our children. I want to thank you for that, because that is very important to me. And then the other question is, I know we're losing Dr. McQuade, so I didn't know if there was any stakeholders who were going to be involved as parents, the stakeholders, in the hiring of the interim and how that is moving along. I don't know if we could answer that or not, but I was just curious to how that process is coming.
So we have interviews set up for this week. It is not a formal committee for the interim. We'll do something more comprehensive when we look for a full-time replacement.
Okay. And then the interim is just going to be for the time being, but we will start looking for a full-time in the meantime? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? If not, I need a motion to close public comment?
Make motion?
Jason? Need a second? Ray? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Terry?
Okay, at 9:36, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, parent litigation matters, special education matters, case negotiations, and matters of attorney privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We, we.
Forty-five minutes? Forty-one?
It's going to be more than that.
Okay. Forty-five minutes, we should return for action. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Mr. Stillman? Oh, wait, roll call, Barbara?
Sure. Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Lockwood?
Here.
Ms. Conklin?
Here.
Here. Mr. Stillman?
Let's remove number two and five.
Second.
Discussion? If not, roll call?
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Greenow?
Yes.
Ms. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Okay. I'd like to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to accept the following gifts. 2023 M1 is substantiated, 2023 M3 is substantiated, 2023 H1 is substantiated, 2023 H2 is substantiated, and, oh, I'm sorry, unsubstantiated, and to hold 2023 M2 as unsubstantiated and to hold that one.
Any discussion? If not, roll call?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Greenow?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Yes. Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 10:10 PM.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And I already got.